Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on June 1st, 2023. And if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for joining us on this beautiful Pacific Northwest evening. We do have an agenda in front of us. I don't think there's any changes. So can I get an adoption, can move, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda and consent agenda as published?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moving and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, that motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone to oppose? That motion carries unanimously, and we have an approved agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is, under public recognitions and presentations, our Public Service Award to Sean Smith. I've known Sean for a long time. Matter of fact, I think you're about, almost the next longest-serving person to the City of Lacey besides myself at the moment, having first started serving on the Left One Disability Board in 2011, all the way up until 2023. And I've had the honor to have appointed you back to this position and have you give your time back to this community and making sure that the people who've worked for the City of Lacey are being taken care of. And so I just, I can speak to you as the person, all the wonderful things you do in this community. But I'm going to turn this over to Kelsey Mubak Greenstein, who has worked with you on the Left One Board, to talk a little bit about your contributions there.
Yeah, so I've had the pleasure of working with Smitty on the Left One Board for quite a number of years now. I'm not sure how many years I've been on there, but just an incredible contributor, always has something to add to the conversation, always prepared, always at every meeting, doesn't ever miss a meeting. So just thank you for your service to the community and to our retired police officers in particular. So, thank you.
I would just say, Smitty, thank you for your service. No one cares about the members like you do on that board. They appreciate it. You know, thanks for giving your heart and soul to it. Thank you.
You've been looking after, I'm going to present you with this distinguished Public Service Award for your work on Left One Disability Board from 2011 to 2023. Thank you so much, buddy.
Thank you. I didn't expect this. A thank you would have been good enough. Just want to say thank you first and foremost to Perry, just accepting me from day one, and all the city council and the board members. Virgil was very welcoming, and so was Ed and Bob. And it was just a pleasure to work with all of you guys. I did mention to the staff that this is the, the number one organization that I've had the pleasure of volunteering with over the years. And I've volunteered through a lot, even with the Veterans Hub. And you guys just not only care about the police officers, you care about the veterans and everyone in this community. So, thank you to my wife as well for loaning me to do what I do, and little Liliana. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, he reminded me, Ed Soder wanted to say he couldn't be here because he had prior engagement, but he wanted to make sure that, you know, I gave him your, his personal thanks as well.
Yeah. So, next up on our approved agenda is a public comment. We didn't have anyone written, any written public comments, and I don't think we have anyone on Zoom, but we do have a couple of people who signed up this evening. The first one is Michael. Please come up and--
I want to thank you guys for letting me bring a comment to the board. And if I'd known better, I would have worn a tie. I like to bring up the homeless camp over by Hobby Lobby and try to supply. My girlfriend's a manager there at nighttime, and she's been assaulted twice. She's been sexually exposed to a couple of times. And a couple of weeks ago, one of the transits tried to attack her with a screwdriver because she caught him stealing. I'd like to know what's being done about the camp over there.
Well, so normally, we don't interact with, people are making public comments, but this is, this is, I'll make the exception here, because we've received, this council's received a ton of emails, really, since that camp has grown. And what people don't understand is that that camp in particular is on Washington State DOT property--
Right.
--but it's actually in the city of Olympia.
Oh, okay.
It's not in the, it's not in the city of Lacey. However--
So, would it be Olympia's problem?
Well, it's, it's, I don't say it's Olympia's problem. I say it's, it's, it's all of our problems, right? Because we're the, all the ones that are dealing with this. There are some resources that are coming online in middle of June, and then the intent is, you know, by June 19th or so, those, everyone there will be moved out and offered resources where they'll have to, you know, move along. And so, there is some light at the end of the tunnel. And I wanted to mention it because everyone looks at that area and they think it's the City of Lacey. And understandably so, because you're, you know, you're surrounded by Lacey on the other side of the freeway, then, but it's Olympia all the way down to College Street. That little part there is Olympia. But we have been in constant contact with Olympia about this issue and coming up with a plan. We just met with Senator Hunt earlier this week to talk to him about that as well, and tell him what, you know, what Lacey does when we look at this issue. And, and so, I appreciate your comment, and I appreciate a lot of people not understanding where the boundaries are in this area, too. And what people care about is, is solving a big issue to our region. And there is some resources on the way in the next couple of weeks. So, I'll give you, I'll give you that much assurance.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
What worries me is, is she gets off at night, and I'm there to make sure she gets out of the store safe. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of women that work there and a lot of young kids. I'm really worried.
Absolutely. We totally, we totally understand that, too. Nancy? If you can introduce yourself, and let us know where you're from, and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. My name is Nancy Rogers. I live in the Wonderwood, by Wonderwood Park, in the South Park Division. And it's a wonderful place to live, or was, until the farm animals were allowed to be there. It wouldn't be bad. I don't have any problem with animals, except that highly allergic, me, to feathers, duck feathers, chicken feathers. The smell is terrible. And what, our property is a third of an acre. Our neighbor's property is almost a third of an acre. Our houses are closer. They built the houses so that there's, on either side, there is the larger part of, of our property. They chose to put their animals in their backyard, which is right next to our property line fence. And so, when they clean up and-- the hay and the poop from the ducks and the geese, I mean, the ducks and the chickens and the goats, he puts it into a little truck that's right there between our house and leaves it for three, four weeks at a time. So, that odor is terrible for us. The odor on our, we can't even go into the side and back property because the odor is so bad. Their animals have come, jumped the fence and come into our yard many times. And when we've said something to them, they, they don't do anything. In fact, he moved his truck over there so that we would have to smell that, because he's upset that we mentioned anything about the animals. And it isn't. We love animals, but to have to live with some of the problems that we have to live with, the noise at, before six o'clock in the morning, ducks are very loud. Chicken's not so bad, and the goats can be loud, too. There's pest problems that we have found. More mice and rats are coming around. Anyway--
Okay.
--that's pretty much.
Well, thank you for letting us know. Our city manager can be in touch with you and talk about through some of these concerns.
That would be great. We talked to Kevin, but all he said, all he could do is just check to see if they're living by the--
The code.
--you know, the code. And so, he said, "Come here and give our story, and maybe you could help us." And I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me share.
Of course. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay. Well, then, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is a proclamation for Juneteenth Day. And I'll catch a couple of council members down there talking. Robin, you're up.
We were talking about HOAs and looking at a map. Apologies. All right. So, "Whereas our great country is made up of people from every nation on earth, who are declared equal not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy society." And?
African Americans. And?
Whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the enslaved people in Confederate territories to be free, and paving the way for the 13th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, abolishing slavery in our nation. And?
Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation, signed by President Lincoln over two and a half years prior, and freed all remaining slaves, all remaining enslaved people in the state of Texas. And?
Whereas formerly enslaved Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings. And as freed families immigrated from Texas to other parts of the United States, they carried the Juneteenth celebration with them. And Juneteenth is now, excuse me, a worldwide celebration which commemorates the end of slavery in the United States of America. And?
Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, and Emancipation Day, is a day of profound significance, celebrating the emancipation of slavery, and a day that reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from the darkest moments with purpose, resolve, and unity. And whereas members of the Fred U. Harris Lodge Number 70 of Prince Hall Masons have hosted an annual community-wide barbecue in celebration of Juneteenth for the last 41 years, drawing nearly 1,000 attendees from around the greater Thurston County area, the Pacific Northwest, and Canada. And the Lodge has invited the City of Lacey and other jurisdictions to join in the celebration of Juneteenth on Saturday, June 17th, from 11:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Regional Athletic Complex, RAC, in Lacey.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby recognize and commemorate June 17th, 2023-- Council, do hereby recognize and commemorate June 17th, 2023, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Lacey, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community groups to explore this important celebration of American culture, history, and pride. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on today's date, June 1st, 2023. And to come up and accept this proclamation, Melvin and Lester from the Fred U. Harris Lodge.
Hey. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate everything.
Can you say a few words?
Just a couple of words. I'm getting tired of being up here for some reason. Seems like we turn around. But no, I'm glad my fraternity, Fred U. Harris Lodge, is up here. That means we doing something for the community. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, I think you all, guests, members of my lodge here, the city, of course, Chief of Police, appreciate you, appreciate everything you're doing. I had a lot of notes up here, and I was going to take it. My mentor, one of my mentors, Grandmaster Gilbert E. McClary, he's the Grandmaster of the Prince Hall. He told me, "Take some notes," but I ain't had nothing to talk about. All I could talk about is goats and stuff like that. But no, but, but other than that, I really, on behalf of Fred U. Harris Lodge, I really appreciate this. We like working together. We love receiving the proclamation, and hopefully, in the future, we just do more. And hopefully, one of us, like Mr. Shiga, be up there somewhere. And I'm sure everybody know, hey, Shiga. If you don't know him, you know him now. Please, community, please come out there, join us, free food, enjoy yourself, music, live band. We getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and the way we getting bigger is family and communication in the city of Lacey and Tonmore. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, I was just giving a synopsis of Lacey and why Lacey is such a great place to raise a family, and had to give a little 30-second video. And, you know, the Juneteenth Day is one of those days in Lacey that after, after experiencing the day and the people and the community, you walk away from that event being proud of your community. And we couldn't do that without you. And so, it's really us thanking you for making this community a better place, so.
Amen.
Okay. Next up is ordinances. Ordinance 1638, Amendment to Illicit Discharges in Wellhead Protections and Critical Aqua Recharge Areas. Now, we're into the good stuff for the, on the agenda. Doug? You can, you guys can feel free to leave, too. You don't, you don't have to stick through this if you don't want to.
But you're welcome.
But you're, you're welcome to hear about our illicit, our illicit discharge ordinances and wellhead protection stuff.
It won't hurt my feet.
Okay, absolutely. Happy anniversary.
My feelings won't be hurt.
Okay.
If you all leave, my feelings will be hurt. Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm presenting tonight amendments to Lacey Municipal Code, Title 14, specifically Chapter 1429, Illicit Discharges, and 1436, Wellhead Protection and Critical Aqua Recharge Areas. Good, it worked. So, I'll go over quickly the, the purpose of these chapters, and then the, the purpose of the changes, the basis for the code amendments, and then we'll look at each chapter with a couple of highlights of what's changing. So, this is the existing wording in these two codes, the stated purpose of each chapter. Basically, they're, they're both about protecting water resources. I've highlighted some of the text in red because it's relevant to these amendments, the regulation of stormwater discharges in Chapter 1429, also controlling the introduction of pollutants into the city's storm system, which we call the MS4 in the stormwater world, and to define the city's legal authority to carry out inspections on-site. That's all existing in the code, but we've got some tweaks to it. And then in Chapter 1436, protecting the quality of groundwater and prevent contamination of our drinking water source. So, the proposed amendments are consistent with these purposes. The purpose of the code amendments is threefold. One, compliance with our Washington State Municipal Stormwater Permit. Secondly, consistency with our recently updated Stormwater Design Manual. And third, some wording updates and clarifications throughout the code. So, the basis for the code amendments starts with our requirements under the state Western Washington Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit. I think everything I've ever brought to this council has been because of that permit. It's issued by the Department of Ecology. It regulates our stormwater discharges, which we have many of throughout the city. It applies all over Western Washington, so we're certainly not the only jurisdiction that is having to address these requirements. Our current permit is in effect through next summer, then a new one will be issued with new requirements. And there are a lot of requirements for compliance under this permit. But two of them in particular led to this amending the code language. The first one is regarding updating our local stormwater regulations. We were required to do that by a deadline of last June. So, about a year ago, I was here before this council, and we updated our Stormwater Design Manual to a 2022 edition. The other part of the permit that affected our codes was S5C8 in the permit, which requires a source control program for existing development. So, it required several aspects to that program. Source control, I should define, it's, it basically means preventing rainfall and runoff water from picking up pollutants at the source. There's two types of source control in general. There's physical structures. For example, a canopy at a gas station keeps the rain off in case there's a spill. It won't get picked up in the stormwater. So, there's physical structures, and then there's operational practices, things we do. In fact, a thing that we as a city do that's a source control is street sweeping. Get out there and pick up material that collects from the gutter before it can get washed into the storm system. So, these amendments, for Chapter 1429, there's some definitions that were updated for consistency with our 2022 Stormwater Manual, and then the source control inspection and enforcement wording that's required for the source control program that the permit requires. In 1436, we also had definitions for consistency with the manual and updates for consistency with the Underground Injection Control Guidance, which was added to the 2022 manual. And what that means is it's basically stormwater being injected subsurface rather than just infiltrating from the surface of the ground. So, in 1429, first of all, illicit discharges, we had, the main changes were in these four sections listed, the definitions, the inspections and monitoring section, source control requirements, and enforcement section. So, in the definitions, they were updated for consistency with our Stormwater Manual, as I mentioned, and we also added a definition for source control BMP. BMP being best management practice. It's a, it's becoming the preferred term that Ecology uses for any kind of a facility. The other definitions that were updated were illicit discharge, illicit connection, and stormwater BMP slash facility. So, we're getting away from calling them facilities and calling everything BMPs now. In, in the inspection and monitoring section, we updated it for permit compliance, since the inspections are being required, and for consistency with the terminology that Ecology uses. The wording, the main wording change in here was to clarify what's going to be inspected for source control inspections. It's the onsite stormwater drainage system, potential sources of pollutants on a site, any source control BMPs that are in place or should be in place, and any connections to the drainage system. In Section 070, under Source Control Requirements, was updated for permit compliance and consistency with Ecology's terminology again. And in 1429100 is the enforcement section. We amended this.
Someone stop that guy.
Yeah, don't do that.
I don't know if it's real.
This was updated because the permit requires us to use what they call progressive enforcement. And we really already had that in there, but it wasn't specifically called progressive enforcement. There was a different term used. So, it's kind of a minor change, but the, what is intended here with progressive enforcement is to encourage compliance before we start really enforcing it. So, we use outreach, education, technical assistance, and then if we're not getting cooperation, then you progress to something more punitive. Okay, in the other chapter, 1436, Wellhead Protection and Critical Aqua Recharge Areas, the main changes are in the definitions, the Critical Aqua Recharge Area Uses and Activities, the CARA reports, and the Wellhead Protection Area Standards for New Uses. Definitions are updated for consistency with our Stormwater Manual and Ecology's terminology again, and also for 1429 that we were just talking about, so that these chapters have consistent terminology. Updated definitions in this chapter include best management practices or BMPs, the definition of hazardous materials, stormwater BMP slash facility again, and underground injection control or UIC well. In 1436110, Uses and Activities and CARAs, this was updated for consistency with, there was a reference in there for, kind of a vague reference, for spill control plans, but it wasn't really defined. Now, it's more explicitly defined as a spill prevention control and countermeasures plan or SPCC plan, which is something that is standardized by the state through the Department of Transportation, and we use it on our city projects. And also, integrated pest management, which has been around for, for many years in stormwater management. It's used to reduce the need for fertilizers and pesticides by using plant selection and maintenance practices. 1436.130, CARA Special Reports. This section is, is being repealed. It's, it's short and redundant, really, and it's incorporated into the section that follows, so it's really unnecessary. And in 1436180, Wellhead Protection Area Standards for New Uses, updated for consistency with the Underground Injection Control Guidance we have in our Stormwater Manual, and for protection of groundwater, which of course is our drinking water source. So, this was updated with some references to fueling stations and mobile onsite fueling, which we see as an emerging threat. So, within the one-year time of travel zone of our source wells, we want to be sure to, it'll be prohibited, but, you know, something that we can, it's a start toward potentially regulating these as they, as they become more prevalent, but we see it as an emerging threat. It also mentions dry cleaning solvents and deep UIC wells for stormwater injection, which is in our 2022 Stormwater Manual, so now it's in this chapter as well, so that they're consistent. Come on, baby. Well, that was the last slide. At a public hearing with the Planning Commission back in January, there were no public comments or testimony received for that, and the Planning Commission, at the end of that hearing, recommended adoption of these amendments to the city council, and that's why I'm here tonight. So, if anybody has any questions I haven't answered, I'd be happy to.
Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt ordinance number 1638, amending LMC Chapter 14.29, illicit discharges, and LMC Chapter 14.36, wellhead protection and critical aqua for recharge areas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Can you, can you give us an example of an illicit connection?
Discharge.
I just, well, it says.
There's illicit discharge and illicit connection.
Illicit connection.
Okay.
Yeah, illicit discharge, we showed, there were some pictures that kind of showed.
Yeah, I saw that.
Illicit connection would be an actual hard connection that goes to storm. Typically, it'd be like a sewer line or a drain line that shouldn't go into storm because it's not draining stormwater, like from inside a building, for example. We don't get too many of those, but if something is plumbed wrong, and it's into the storm system when it should not be, that's an illicit connection.
Okay, so oftentimes, when, if, when and if that actually occurs, it's, it's, it was more of a mistake or accident than, and some intentional nefarious thing?
I'd like to think so. But you never know.
You have to remember, like, you know, for, that's something that used to happen a lot, was a lot more common way back when, when you didn't have a sewer system, and yet you had runoff, and so they just pipe it into the stormwater system, right? But those days are long gone. You know, we don't do that anymore. I kind of want to boil this down to maybe what the average citizen can sort of take out of this, because I was, I was looking through it and saying, where, where this is apply, and I think it applies in, in two different areas. One is washing your car at home. You know, we, we don't specifically call out, "Do not wash your car at home," because it's illicit discharge. But you basically list all the things that people use while they're washing their car, and you say you can't use any of those. So, can people wash their car at home?
Yes, they can wash their car at home. What we ask is they try to prevent from their car washing to contribute to an illicit discharge, and that happens when your runoff goes out and finds its way into a storm drain grate, like we showed pictures of. You know, if you can prevent that from happening, then you're, you're preventing an illicit discharge. So, we.
So, if you're doing it on, on the lawn or something like that?
That's a good way to do it at home, yes.
And then the other one is, and you make reference to it in, in here as well, is when you're draining your, your hot tub. And you're saying that most of the times, it's considered illicit discharge unless you can get the chlorine down to a level where it's basically neutral.
Right.
And you also want to make sure it's not heated up. It's basically back to room temperature or whatever, and so it's not changing the temperature.
Yeah, close to ambient temperature.
The ambient temperature.
Because, yes, because.
And so, in, in those two circumstances, if you do that, you test your hot tub, and it's, there's not, you know, there's not chlorine in it, or, you know, and then if it's lukewarm, you can drain that into a, a stormwater system and be okay. Otherwise, you need to drain it and, again, into your yard.
Yes, in our code, there's a whole category of allowable or conditionally allowable discharges, and that would fit that criteria.
Okay.
So, I have a question about professional carpet cleaning companies, their discharge. Where, where do they take that to properly dispose of it? Because I know in the past, I have seen vans pull up to a storm drain and just let it rip. That's not, not going to pass inspection in this day and age, so what, what is it that they do now to eliminate that practice?
Well, that, that sort of thing should be collected and discharged to sanitary sewer. It's not stormwater, it's processed water, so it shouldn't go in the storm system. But mobile businesses is a, is a whole area of, it's kind of tough. But mobile businesses is a, is a whole area of, it's kind of tough to, to get a handle on.
Okay. You said a sanitary sewer? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that capacity in the city of Lacey?
Well.
We don't have any opening. The closest place that you can do that is down at Lot, and, and Lot has a place where you can take black water, that's considered black water, and you can take it to Lot and use it, and they used to allow, they used, used to be able to do it for free. I'm not sure if you can still, if it's still for free, but you used to be able to do it for free, where, where if you have your RV and you need to dump your RV, you could take it to Lot and they allow you to dump there, so.
Yeah.
Yep. Any other questions? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance thirteen, sixteen thirty-eight. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next up on our agenda is the mayor's report, and I have a couple of things. The first up is the appointment of John Halverson to the historic commission. We've obviously had an opening on our historic commission, and when I was going through the applications, I saw that John graciously decided to come back and continue to serve the city of Lacey. And of course, I call him Mayor Halverson because that's who he is to me, and so I am overjoyed and very honored to be able to appoint John Halverson to the historic commission, and I hope there is a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This was the, one of the easiest decisions I've ever had to make for an appointment. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you, Mayor, and we really appreciate. Can we aye twice? We really appreciate you giving, giving back the city of Lacey. I don't know what, you know, just have time on your hands now, and you want?
I have a current desire to give a museum building, so I'm going to go visit Troy every day until we get ready.
Man, that is music to my ears. Thank you.
I'm excited to witness and to one-time participate in amending Lacey municipal code.
Well, I'm glad you were able to sit here and listen, listen to us amend our municipal code. I know it's exciting times. Well, thank you, John, appreciate it. The, the other thing I, I want to mention is, next week, coming before this council, will be on our agenda to extend our contract with TC Media until the end of the year. This is obviously something that this council has had some conversation about, and there's, there's been this ongoing conversation, sort of at the regional level, about TC Media, and does TC Media still have a place within the jurisdictions, or are the jurisdictions going to go a different direction? Of course, as I think this council knows, I've been a very strong advocate for TC Media. I think they offer a lot when it comes to public access and education that sometimes we don't always tangibly see, but we know it's out in the community and they're doing good things. Of course, we just had a pandemic too, and so sometimes I think we forget about that, and I think we also sort of get into these, like, dollars and cents vision and forget about the, the broader services that we provide as a community and the value to, to the area. What I would hope is that we hear from TC Media, you know, at a future work session, so they can kind of go over more of those intangible things that they provide to this community before this council makes a final decision to no longer use TC Media in the future. Councilman?
Do, do we have data that shows the impact that TC Media has on the public? Do we know the viewership? That, that would be helpful to know.
Yep. The, I, I spoke with the executive director of TC Media this afternoon and asked, again, for that, that information data, what the public access, what their programs are showing, especially coming out of the pandemic, and she indicated she has some of that data and would be pulled together and get it to us next week, but that's definitely something we want to have as part of this work session conversation. Just one clarification is the, the contract to extend to the end of the year will be on your next council meeting, which is June fifteenth in two weeks, and then we'll look at scheduling a work session soon after that and probably be in July, the first part of July.
So I just, I, I met with Deb and Megan today, who's the chair, and of course, the executive director, and, you know, I, I'm getting this very strong feeling that the other jurisdictions are not going to renew their contract, which would mean the end of TC Media. And so I just want to make sure we're, we're on the same page and we're, we're all looking at the same information before we make a decision that big.
My, my, my big question is, because I, I totally agree, we need to look at all of it. If the other jurisdictions, as you said, are leaning that direction, if they leave, is it even feasible anymore for us to be able to say, can they survive with just us? That's.
That's, that's part of the, the conversations we've been having as, as a region and, and TC Media, and if other jurisdictions leave, it wouldn't prob, you wouldn't see TC Media in the same form as it is today. It's going to have to evolve its business model or to look at other avenues to provide that public service. And that's some of the things that we have this ongoing conversation about.
So I just want to say that because it's been weighing heavily on, on me. We've been having some regional conversations, but I'm not sure if those conversations are actually reaching out to the full elected bodies for the other jurisdictions, and I think that needs to happen too, because this, again, affects all of us. If, I think really if any of us leaves, it will change TC Media drastically going forward, drastically, so. Okay, that's my two cents there. Next up is standing general committees, and the first up on that is the Finance and Economic Development Committee, which met back on the twenty-third. And the main, the main agenda I am was going over the first quarter financial report. And really, there's nothing unexpected that's in this report. I, I do think that the, the big change that we've seen in the first quarter is really when it comes to our general fund expenditures. And in this case, our expenditures were about two-point-four million more in, in this first quarter than compared to last year's first quarter, and there's a big reason for that. We had several contracts with standing, outstanding that we needed to, to close on, and we knew about that, and we budgeted for it, but within those contracts, there was some, some pay increases that were retroactive, and of course, we had to come up with all the, that those dollars within that first quarter, which is why our general fund expenditures were higher. And then on the revenue side, they were actually a little bit lower compared to last year, but our, our budgeting is so weird, because whenever you have a transfer that comes in for, like, say, a large grant, we show that on our budget as new, as revenue that comes in. Well, it's, I wouldn't call that revenue, it's a transfer of funds from one government agency to the next, but we classify it as revenue, and we had some of those big transfers that happened first quarter of last year that we didn't have this year, and so it shows we have a decrease in revenue, which, yeah. That's, yeah, anyway, but sales tax is so far on the first quarter is, it's trending better than last year. I know we just recently had another sales tax monthly report that went back to, to March that shows that it was a little lower than March of last year, but, you know, we're being cautiously, cautiously optimistic, we're still in a good place. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a weird time right now when it comes to our economy, where we keep thinking this cliff is going to happen because inflation is at still crazy high, but wages have somehow managed to keep up with that inflation, so we've been able to sort of get through this time, and sales tax is such an important part of our general fund budget, it's our, you know, that, this is why we, we care about this issue so much, so. So, but so far, we're, we're looking okay there. Then our utility funds is basically right where we expect them to be. So that's my report. Next up is General Government and Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. So General Government and Public Safety Committee met on May twenty-third. We had a three-item agenda. I'll go over them quickly, but all three of these will be coming before council over the next, you know, several meetings, but first on the agenda was the amendment to Lacey Municipal Code nine-point-one-two-point-zero-six-zero harassment, and it was presented by Matt Sharp, our assistant city attorney. And basically, what you have there is the state Supreme Court held that a portion of the state statute on harassment was unconstitutional, which was the part referring to mental, mental health. So we had to reword ours to change, make it, to make it work with the state, so we couldn't have something in there that the state constitution said was, it was not permissible, so we had to make the change there. That's one of the amendments you'll be seeing, and that, like I said, that'll come before council here in the near future. The second one was the behavioral nuisance ordinance that our city attorney, Dave Schneider, presented. Staff reviewed potential changes to the code as it pertains to behavioral nuisances. Nuisances are defined as specifically through, throughout the Lacey Municipal Code in various areas, such as criminal land use, animals, et cetera. Basically, the idea here was to make it so there could be civil, civil infractions for a property owner if there's too many of these behavioral nuisance problems on their property. And again, that one will be coming before the full council as an ordinance here, probably the end of June. And then last on the agenda was an update on the, to the council policies, procedures manual by our city clerk, Perry Edmonds, and, and that one, it was an overview of the recommended changes to chapter seven and nine relating to the order of business, electronic voting, and housekeeping items. This all comes from the change to the new system that's coming here shortly, moving away from Granicus, and that will allow us some more options and the ability to do some different things. And that is my report.
Thank you. Now we're on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
A couple of quick ones. EDC board met on May twenty-fourth at the Lacey Makerspace. First, we got a, kind of a briefing on the, the, an update on the Makerspace and how it's performing. It looks like that the membership is up from forty members to one-hundred-and-eighty-four members. That's over a period of two years, and so now, membership is coming from Mason, Lewis, King, Pierce, Grace Harbor, so the Makerspace is, is really reaching out and not quite paying for itself yet, but on its way to being a little more self-sustaining. Standard membership's still at fifty dollars. The expansion is underway, so in the end, that space will be about ten thousand square feet, so it'll be a really nice-sized fabrication laboratory and something that, you know, will really benefit this region. Another, our next-gen item was the, the Pacific Salish Economic Development District, and, you know, there's, there's a four-county district right now, but we are not in that district, and we really need to be added to that district. The only two counties in the state of Washington are not part of a, an economic development district, and those two counties are Thurston and Walla Walla. And so our addition to the district has been approved by the U.S. Economic Development Administration, or Commerce. Three-hundred-and-eighty districts exist nationwide, so every county in Washington but these two, and it, and it has to include multiple counties, so as we, you know, it's already been approved that we can be a part of the district. Now we just kind of have to do the legwork in forming the different committees and subcommittees, adding us to the district. My history with federal economic development districts is not as extensive as some of the other council members, and so I wanted to give the city manager an opportunity to, to jump in here and maybe say a couple of things if you would like to.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The, this is a, an effort that's just now getting started, but it's actually guys' foundation going back to twenty-fifteen when the council adopted the current city of Lacey's economic development plan, and in that plan identified the need to do a, what's called a SEDS, it's comprehensive economic plan, development plan for our region, and we're looking to try to get funding for that and to create this economic development district. When we reached out to EDA, that's when we found out that they wouldn't allow a new district reform of just one county, that we needed to look at an adjacent district to join, and that started this process where Michael Kay at the Thurston Economic Development Council reached out to these other districts, they were, they weren't quite performing, and so we're bringing some new life into revamping the, the current economic development district we're joining into it. A key piece to get this thing going is we received grant funding from the EDA, Economic Development Agency, to take on this effort. We're going to be developing in coordination with the other four counties this comprehensive environmental development strategy, which will help lay a five-county region vision, but underneath that, each of the counties will have their own economic visions, and then it kind of down to the, to the city or local government level. What the value that this, this brings is it kind of brings a little bit more harmony, if you will, between the various efforts, especially within our, our county, our region. We can have better coordination on economic development strategies. It also will help us qualify for EDA grant funds to help support, you know, business recruitment, business workforce development, as well as infrastructure to facilitate the business expansion. So it is a nice effort to get underway, and then it also opens up the opportunity for those EDA dollars to come into Thurston County for qualifying projects in the future. And the SEDS process will identify some of those current strategies that we'll be inputting into the system, or into the process.
Thank you. So some of the top priorities would, you know, allow us to compete for federal funding, but some of these things are, you know, job retention, creating jobs, private investment, and then, you know, for most properties, there's a fifty percent match. The benefits of an economic development district would be increased competitiveness and access to public work grants, economic adjustment assistance, partnership planning, disaster recovery, and current, current EDA funding priorities include equity, recovery, and resilience, workforce development, manufacturing, technology-based economic development, environmentally sustainable development, which we seem to have a pretty good grip on out here in the state of Washington, exports and FDI. Eligible projects for funding include construction, non-construction, planning, technical existence, revolving loan funds, and apparent, well, according to the consultant that we're working with, this may be up and running as soon as November, so in this next year, we may, you know, be eligible and, and competitive for some federal grants and dollars that we wouldn't have access to otherwise. My next report is for Thurston Thrives, who met yesterday morning at seven-thirty. We, top of our agenda is, you know, you had the, the ability to adjust a seven-thirty to.
I don't have that on that, on that one.
No? That wasn't one of them?
That's not one of them.
Okay. Top on our, our agenda for, for Thurston Thrives became the opioid situation and the fentanyl situation, you know, it's, there's a lot of deaths that are happening. The sheriff was present and several other people, the prosecutor was present, and, you know, the sheriff remarked that, you know, every day that he comes in, he gets to see who died yesterday, and so far, there aren't a whole lot of days where there's nobody on that, on that, that blot or that list. And so we, you know, we talked about a previous, you know, joint narcotics task force that, that was happening here in Thurston County that, that ended up being disbanded for whatever reason, but he also remarked that there are, you know, for the three-hundred-thousand population county that we're in, there are literally two detectives working this county trying to keep these, you know, these drugs off the street, or pursuing the dealers who are dealing the fentanyl and, and the opioids in the, in these communities, and it's, it's just not enough, unfortunately. Fortunately, we did have some state representation there at this meeting and did kind of express those concerns to our state representation, hopefully, well, I guess Brian's here, so he would know better about potential dollars for, you know, applying funds to the county so that we can get more help getting drugs off the streets. The, the issue is kind of, it's, it's serious enough that a NarCam, is it NarCam, Narcan?
Okay.
Narcan. Vending machine has been placed in the county jail, and so literally, a vending vending machine for Narcan is, has been purchased and being placed at Thurston County Jail. You can swipe a ticket and you can get some Narcan out of the machine and help someone. And, you know, as we roundtable, you know, solutions for this circumstance, this situation, these are the types of things that are coming up because it's really that serious and that many people are dying. Apparently, the opioid and fentanyl death has now eclipsed the traffic deaths. And so more people die from opioid and fentanyl than people die from, and more people drive than users, but at least we hope. But more people die from this than pretty much anything right now. The, we did spend some time focusing on, you know, how these opioid dollars, settlement dollars are going to be used, you know. And there has been some consensus at the, you know, the different jurisdictional levels across county. And so far, the only group that has yet to sign on is Aberdeen for reasons I'm not sure of yet. But the Thurston Thrives group has been reaching out. And Romero, actually, the county manager, has also reached out to see, you know, what is holding them up. That's all that we have for that. Solutions. Oh, okay. The overdose count for Thurston County Jail over a two-week period of time was nine overdoses in 14 days. And two of them were fatal. And that is my report.
Wow. Councilmember Cox?
I have one report. This is on the Regional Housing Council, which met on May 24. We learned that the Maple Court Enhanced Shelter, formerly the Days Inn in Lacey, is going to open on June 19. And the first occupants of this shelter will be people from homeless encampments along I-5, particularly Slater-Kenny. So that's exciting news. And this is going to be an evolving project because they're going to be remodeling some floors, but they've got one ready to go soon here. We also recommended funding awards to the county commissioners. There was $1.2 million in eviction prevention rent assistance funds. And these funds are going to go to the Family Support Center, Partners in Prevention Education, and Community Use Services. So we're hitting all age groups there with the rent assistance. And then there was $333,000 in consolidated homeless services grant and basic needs funds. These are basic human services funds. And those, that total was awarded, divided among nine different organizations. This summer, we expect to have $5.5 million available for capital projects. This is from local, state, and federal funding sources. And of that, $1.3 million has already been committed. These are from the County Home Fund for the 162-unit Lansdale Point Low Income Housing Project in Olympia. And we'll be advertising for applicants for the remainder of the funds. The two advisory committees that we now have, Affordable Housing and Homeless Services, have suggested that we not set specific priorities for this funding, but rather open it up to all projects that qualify. But they must meet the criteria of the grant money that they are asking for. And then one more thing, as many of you know, the Regional Housing Council is a pretty new organization. And so our next step as an organization is developing an annual work plan. We've been kind of building the airplane as we've flown it, so to speak. So staff from the participating jurisdictions of Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, Yelm, and Thurston County are working on a plan that would include projects for the coming year and years ahead. So it's really exciting. It's the first step in actually becoming a more mature organization, and I really look forward to this. Thanks.
Thank you. I wasn't able to make that last meeting as the alternate, but I know that from the get-go, we've been, the Regional Housing Council's been talking about becoming an independent agency and not under the county commission as it is right now. Where are they at on those conversations on, you know, hiring an executive director and having independent staff and really be the next step in being an independent organization?
It's still in the conversational stage. There haven't been any concrete steps taken so far. Rick, do you have any insights on that?
Not much more than what you just said. It's in the conversational stage. But one of the pieces, too, is it's good that we're now getting to the point of developing that work plan. That's something that's prescribed by the interlocal agreement. And that work plan will identify where the routine funding cycle, so that people can have that on their radar, that how do you fold in the additional work, the long-term strategies, such as the transition of the housing council into that standalone entity. That work's going to take some time because you got to want to try and do it right, and you got to try to get the funding. And it's a transition piece. So the work plan will help define that long-term strategy.
Thank you. So the end of your reports? Okay, then Councilmember Greenstein?
I have no report this evening.
About Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, at the end of this report, I just have one quick report, but I wanted to, I heard some disturbing stuff about the drugs in the area, and it was piqued my interest with the deputy mayor. So give this report, and then I was going to see if you can maybe give more detail on it because, you know, it's just rumor stuff, I guess. I don't know. The Community Action Council met on the 24th of May at 5:30. Our CEO finally took a vacation. It was kind of like, reminded me of Scott Spence, where we'd have to force him to take a vacation when he's here because we didn't want him to hit a wall and, you know, not be there for us when we needed it. So it was great that Kirsten York, Kirsten York, finally got a vacation. She's well-deserved. She's been working herself crazy, and so it was good to see that she got a little break. Monarch had a fundraiser, raised almost $30,000. So it was great, you know. It's servicing those kids that have been through a lot of traumatic times in their life is something pretty special. And the, I also saw that on the Lacey newsletter that the water bills, so past due water bills, I wanted to remind people that the Community Action Council, you can apply for assistance because they have a variety of different grants and programs. So that's another avenue. If you're struggling to make your utility payments, call the Community Action Council of Lewis, Mason, Thurston County at 360-438-1100. That's 360-438-1100. And then also contact the city before July 10, also if you need to get on a payment plan. Those are two important things that I think the community needs to hear about. I also wanted, that's my report for the Community Action Council, but I wanted to also say that Polyfest is coming up. And that is on June 10 at 6:00 PM. And it's at the Faith Lutheran's little, the gym there, the multi-use gym there. And so it's a great cause. Come out. It's just like, you know, Juneteenth. It's a good community event to really, you know, celebrate each other. So other than that, the disturbing news I heard was if someone was to get some, like cocaine in Thurston County, that would have at least a small trace of fentanyl in it, is rumored. But, I mean, that's disturbing. And then we hear, I've heard that through officer friends of mine, that, you know, one or two Narcans sometimes don't work. I mean, you could have Narcan on hand, and it just isn't effective because of the amount of the overdose. I don't know if you can touch base on that or give a little bit better information, but it was disturbing enough for me to bring up when I heard the deputy mayor talk about it.
It is not uncommon for illicit drugs to be laced with fentanyl. We're seeing that quite commonly, frankly. It's a way to get your, your customer, your customer base gets hooked on your product. A lot of times, even the pills such as codeine, people think of taking Tylenol codeine number threes, different things like that, incorrectly. But they think that's what they're getting online. In fact, they are laced with fentanyl, and that we're getting some overdoses from that unintentionally. So, yeah, that is true. That is happening. We are seeing that throughout the region, throughout the country. And we're not immune from that here in Thurston County. On the other issue of Narcan, it depends on the amount of fentanyl or opioid that you've ingested, that a single use of Narcan or an Exelon wouldn't be effective. So you might use a second one, somebody's a third one. There's, that's, we've had numerous examples of that. Sometimes it's because it's not an opioid, and it doesn't work on non-opioid products. But it's not uncommon. Fentanyl is a very, very strong opioid. And that's why it's such an effective, when it's used legitimately in a hospital setting, it's an excellent tool. But in an illicit setting, it's very, very dangerous because a little bit goes a long way. And these are not generally university-level scholars and chemists that are mixing it. So we're talking micrograms. It's easy to make a mistake.
Thank you for that, Chief. I do want to follow up on the Community Action Council. It seems like, I don't know, I've been in the city hall a lot lately, and I've noticed that the Community Action Council is always here. You know, do we know the times that they've been here in city of Lacey and they continue to be here in city of Lacey?
They have been here, in some cases, for six-hour shifts at a time. I think it's generally Mondays, Wednesdays, and sometimes Tuesdays. Going forward, they'll be here Monday, June 5 from 9:00 to 4:30, Monday, June 12 from 9:00 to 4:30, and then June 20 and 27 and the 3rd. And we've been pushing that information out to the public, as well as our utility billing staff have been interacting with ratepayers, also have been informing them. And it's actually been very effective to have them here on site because it takes down an extra step or barrier for people to ask for that assistance. That assistance has been fairly successful. Some just rough numbers, just for this year alone, from 2023 numbers, we've received about $220,000 in assistance funds into our, you know, paying for utility. There are also some funds at $26,000 that are pending. And I know some preliminary numbers since we started the notice for this, the turnoff process, the water delinquency turnoff program. This is numbers from about a week and a half ago that roughly have been awarded somewhere around $45,000 in utility bill assistance. And what's been interesting about this is it's connecting people right to the service provider. And a lot of times, those people have already been receiving assistance for power bills, but didn't know there was a water component. So it's been very effective. And then also being on site, it takes a step out of the process and delay in some receiving those funds.
Great. Well, thank you for that. I just know we're about ready to hit that cliff, you know. And this is something that we've been worried about for a bit. We've had a ton of past due utility bills, especially water bills out there. And we had a, you know, emergency in place, and so we weren't sending those to collections. Well, that's all sort of around the corner. And so we want to make sure the public that knows that if you have a past due notice out there and you experience hardships, that there's resources out there for you.
I forgot to add a couple of things. One, we started this notification process back in the end of April, 1st of May, with all this information. We've been pushing that out in our inserts. Also, just this week, we sent letters out to properties that are not owner-occupying, meaning that the utility ratepayers may be a tenant, so that those property owners are aware. And hopefully, they will help encourage their tenants to seek assistance and bring their bills to current. And so that went out this week, so you may hear some feedback from some of our property owners out there as well.
Yeah, because that's always the scary thing. You might have a tenant, and you don't know that their utility is past due, but the property owner is always the one that's on the hook at the end for the bill. And so that's always a scary thing where you think your tenant's been paying the water bill, but if they're not on the notification side of things, that there is a past due, and a lot of property owners are not, they could be hit with a big bill, which is really scary.
Can I inquire on that? We talked before about this, and I, my understanding was in a landlord-tenant relationship, we do send notices to the property owner as well as the tenant, particularly if they're past due. That's the current practice that we're engaged in, correct?
It depends because they, because our contract is with the ratepayer, the utility customer. And that may be just the tenant, or, but if the property owner requests to be notified, there is paperwork they can complete that they can submit, and we would notify them in that case. So it depends on if they've asked for that information.
It would be nice if we can figure out a way to kind of shore that up so that there's less people that are out of pocket.
I agree, because going forward, we'll make sure that that information, that request for that information is more prominent. And because it is, it's based on state RCW that any utility automatically goes against the property. And so that's where, we don't want to, we want to try to avoid as many surprises to our property owners and our citizens in our community.
We're talking about hardships. Most of the landlords that have property around Thurston County are not, they're not big corporations. They're people like you and me that are just working on building on a portfolio, may own two or three rentals, or maybe only own one rental. And to be hit with a water bill that's a year past due, that's huge. You know, that's something that...
That's why we've really been trying to get the word out and why we've added notification to the property owners now. And I think that's something we can talk about. I mean, we could talk about having IMAC notification where the property owner is always notified. That's something that we could talk about as a part of our process. I mean...
Well, the owner's, you know, billing, or the owner's mailing address, particularly for tax purposes, it's all public record. So there is a way that we could shore that up.
Well, and it's also part of looking at our system and how we can revamp our system. So we can definitely look at that and have that conversation going forward, how we best we do that notification.
And with this, I will turn to Councilmember Kunkel. It's your turn on, so you can...
Before we leave that topic, I just, I wanted to make one comment. You know, I think there's also other resources that we can consider providing access to that could benefit both people leaving a landlord-tenant situation. For instance, right now, there is a program in place that requires tenants and landlords to go through the mediation process before proceeding through the evictions process. It was something that we put in place during COVID to reduce the number of evictions happening without a process where everybody talked to each other to try to resolve the conflict in a less formalized, expensive way. That requirement is going away, but the program still exists. So the Thurston mediation organization, the Dispute Resolution Center, still provides that program, but it's not being automatically funded. And so it's something I'd love for us to talk about in the future because being able to mediate a dispute if things have gone sour between a tenant and a landlord through the mediation process instead of proceeding with eviction process can save the landlord money. It can bring these things like an overdue utility bill to light, and it can help them come up with a way to put together a payment plan that works for the tenant and the landlord instead of just having the tenant leave with a black mark on their rental record and having the landlord stuck with the bill.
That's a good conversation that we can continue to have.
Another side note when it comes to the water bills, too. I've heard from a couple people that have direct deposit, and they didn't look at their bill very closely for a couple of months and realized that they probably had a leak in the higher bill than normal because they just weren't looking at the details, you know, finely. So that's, you know, make sure you review your bill and make sure it's not, nothing out of hand because you could have a, could have a leak and not know it.
Yep. I was just talking to John about that. He's a guy, a leak at his house, poor guy. Deputy, just, I'll tell you, Mayor. Okay, let's see if we can move this along. Councilmember Kunkel, you're up. Do you have a report?
I have no report.
Well, look at that. How about Councilmember Vasquez?
For once, neither do I. We have TRPC tomorrow.
Perfect. With that, we reached the... With that, we reached the part of our agenda that we are going to adjourn to a work session, which means we're going to go over there to the table to talk about our 2023 legislative session review with Brian and Shannon. So we need just like five minutes for we to switch over there. So it is seven fifteen. We're going to adjourn to a work session and reconvene at seven twenty.
She was behind me. She says something. I said, let me turn the boat.
Okay. Well?
Just a second.
Now, there's, there's, uh, there we go.
Get closer.
Is it a chair or a short person? Is it a tall person, actually?
Are we live?
I don't know anything. I'm not, I'm short. What do you know? Yeah, I can't...
I prefer to have the seat high.
When I start dunking, I use a racket.
Okay. Um, well, uh, it's seven, seven twenty-one, and we're gonna reconvene this work session to talk about our legislative session. So I'll just turn it right over to Shannon and Brennan.
Great. Well, we're happy to have Brian here tonight to provide a much more detailed overview of the 2023 session. I have let Brian know that we've got about 20 minutes and then saving 10 minutes for question and answer. However, certainly if the council has any questions while we're going through the presentation, please don't hesitate to ask. Don't wait to save them. I will just kind of maybe cut to, uh, the, the chase of saying that we had a very successful legislative session as part of the City of Lacey's priorities. I know Brian's gonna get into detail about that, but I do want to just, you know, thank Brian for his efforts through the legislative session and also the direction from the city council on those priorities, which really helped us be successful as part of this year's session. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Brian and I'll start your presentation and let you drive.
Great. Thank you. Now, I appreciate Shannon's remarks. Obviously, the work that your staff does to support our agenda and our proposals and get quality information really helps me when I'm engaging with our legislative leaders to be able to clearly communicate. And obviously, the work that you do throughout the year and the interim to develop relationships with your delegation is just, it's just gold. And so in my assessment, yeah, we did have a great session. It was great to be back after a couple of years of being virtual. To be able to actually engage and have a more kind of detailed and back and forth on some of these very difficult issues that we were facing, I think was really useful. So I certainly appreciated it. Is right gonna go forward or is left gonna go forward? Left's gonna go forward. Fantastic. Okay. Our first legislative agenda item was, was looking to find some state support for development of Gray Cuyah Park. I am very pleased to report that our legislation, our legislative delegation was able to deliver both in the, what's called like the member request or the local community projects bucket, which is funding from Department of Commerce based on having members ask for that. And then we were additionally able to be competitive, and that's a total testament to your staff and the, and the great materials they put forward. So in addition to our request, $500,000, we also received it from, through grant process, $515,000. So that's over a million dollars, being able to support the development of phase one of Gray Cuyah Park. So all thanks to your legislative delegation and the great work of the staff. The next capital request item, we ended up pivoting, quite frankly. When some of the members started asking questions about the timing of when we might need the resources, and when we did an honest look, it was next year. And so they didn't want to like use a chit on something they didn't have to do this year. Fortunately, we were able to like, kind of, like, 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 like pivot really quickly. I think some of you are familiar, was it two sessions ago or maybe it was just last session? Where we were able to receive some funding to provide some electrification and charging stations at the regional athletic complex. Well, no good deed goes unpunished. You start putting that additional load and all of a sudden the transformer isn't sufficient to light the stadium. Okay, so, so we're like, oh, okay, so we need to replace the transformer. So we were able to actually put forward a request kind of last minute. Again, great work with the staff, super responsive, put together a funding package, submitted it through the process, and we were able to get, receive $103,000 in order to upgrade that transformer. So we can play baseball and charge our cars.
So that's, that's really important because I was actually just through this on my own project and I needed to get a larger transformer. And, but PSE was backordered.
Oh, like, yeah.
Seven, eight months. I mean, it, it took forever for the transformer to come in. So, I mean, hopefully we're, we're letting them know we need the transformer now. And so is it on order or do we, do we know what's going on with the transformer?
So I would actually turn maybe to Scott Egger, but I will say that we do have a period of time to expend these funds. And so as of right now, it's not a concern. We'd have a couple of months to...
I'm just saying we should order that sucker now because we won't get it for a long time.
And that's part of the project area in the city hall parking lot where we did run into those lead times. And so as we do these projects, we're looking to take into account those lead times as we do our project schedules.
One of the things we're also hearing is that we think there's going to be an opportunity this July for kind of a unique funding cycle from RCO. Without getting too wonky, the stadium authorities are being retired, the debt authorities, and there's actually some extra money, and they're going to be pushing it out. We should, we, we think we will have a competitive package for some of our athletic fields and other recreational opportunities, which may include swapping out some of the lights at the rack. There's still some conversations that need to be had there, but looking at that as well. So...
I just want to highlight, as Brian said, you know, we obviously had to pivot during this session, but certainly want to take a look at opportunities in the future to come back for the emergency operations center as well. So we'll, we'll be continuing to talk about that looking into 2024.
Yeah, exactly. The, the third item on legislative agenda was the commercial airport siding. And there were strong voices in the city and throughout the county in opposition to that. The legislature was pretty responsive to that. There was a piece of legislation in the past that basically repudiates, I think, is probably a, a strong, you know, maybe a little too strong a word. But in, but in many ways, it creates a new work group and replaces the existing, the existing mechanism and says, you need to, you need to, you need to do some comprehensive planning. You need to actually like think about the impact to communities. That work group is going to be established this interim and is directed to report to the legislature on an annual basis.
So this disbands the CAC, the Commercial Aviation Commission that had previously been established?
Governor vetoed part of that, that really allowed that decision to actually go on? I saw, I thought I read someplace with the governor vetoed a part of that, this legislation.
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
It might be an oversight on my part, but I don't remember seeing that. But I will certainly get back to the full council on that issue.
I think it was a timing issue.
I heard through the JBLM that they eliminated previous, previous county in Thurston County anyways because of the traffic from there.
I, I, I think that there was some strong consideration given to that, but, but, but it was not explicitly eliminated from consideration.
I think that's a great way to describe it. And certainly part of it was taking a look at impacts of two military installations, and that was written into the previous legislation and then looking forward. Something that will be looked at as well.
Item number four on our legislative agenda was to secure long-term funding for our right-of-way initiative on our housing acquisitions. We were, I've got some, you know, like more than half of the, the, the operating budget includes the baseline contract that's at the Department of Commerce that helped us move forward initially. And I believe we've had some very good conversations with the lead at Commerce about what we may need ongoing. This year, this, this legislative session, there was an additional $60 million attached to that underlying, I believe, $40 million. That 60 is only one-time or is indicated as one-time. So I think in the short run, we have a strong commitment from the agency to do whatever they can. This is like verbatim from what I've heard from the agency is we're going to do whatever we can to keep our existing capacity fully supported, both on the capital side and on the operating side. So I feel, I feel good about that, but we still, more work to be done as we really think, when we think truly long-term.
That's a, that's pretty big because we know it's been funded for three years, especially Maple Court. And, and so the question we're having with the community is so what happens on year four?
Yeah.
So obviously, ongoing operational expenses would be...
As well as the conversion.
Yes.
Planned through rumors for the housing as well.
Yep.
I just want to point out, while not on our agenda, these were pretty significant. I did want to flag them for you. House Bill 1110 was passed this year. It, it has some requirements around minimum densities that impact the City of Lacey. For all cities in between 25,000 and 75,000, it now has a requirement of at least two units per lot on all lots owned, primary, primary for residential. Up to four if two of those units are going to be affordable, and that is defined in statute. You can look at that. And then lastly, although we currently do not have anything that meets the definition of a major transit stop, that doesn't mean in the future we want, and that would be four units there. So think, think like true bus rapid transit where it's, where there's dedicated guide lanes, where there's platforms, where there's pay before you get on the bus kinds of systems that bus trains, the, the components of...
White rails and stuff like that.
Yeah. So...
So I have a, I have a quick question about this. For example, I, I live in the old historic Lacey neighborhood that has a restriction on it that's, you know, restrictive on how many units, you know, what you can build on it. But it's predominantly residential use. So is, is, does this new bill supersede the Lacey code that doesn't allow for more density to happen in, say, that district?
And, and the, and the density, it's traditionally controlled in that district by land use size, parcel size. However, this will require us to update certain aspects of our code, and that would be one of them, to be able to accommodate at least the four unit per lot clause for the affordable housing and, and bus rapid transit. Wouldn't qualify for bus rapid transit, but if somebody did propose a affordable housing, you know, two units, they would have to allow that for. And so we'd have to reconcile that with our ordinances. So community land development departments will be aware of this, and they'll be incorporating this as, as part of the conference and plan update.
So at least two units per lot on all lots owned predominantly for residential use? So does that, what, what exactly does that mean? Like...
Everything, you're gonna have a duplex there.
Duplex ADU.
ADU. You don't have to have a duplex. Is that what your question is?
Yeah, like...
It's just, it's just an existing, it would be an existing allowable use. It would not be a required use.
Oh, okay. So if, if you did, e, e, even if there was some municipal code that said, hey, we'd prefer that you put a duplex there, you can still build a single-family residence there?
This has to be allowable and not conditionally.
Well, and where, and that we've, we've already passed that in, in almost every circumstance in the City of Lacey. So this, this has very little effect. What it does have effect is on the special districts within Lacey that are predominantly residential, like the old historic Lacey neighborhood, where it wasn't allowed within Lacey code. So if I wanted to do an ADU on a parcel that didn't meet the minimum, you know, a requirement to allow another unit to go on it, you, you couldn't do it. But now with this legislation, you can. And if it's, you know, if two of those units can be affordable, you're gonna have four, four units on, on, you know, in that area.
One distinction I want to make, and I don't know if it's applicable to this situ, this specific situation, is there is a distinction between a, like a covenants or like, like a homeowner's covenants. And, and this, this bill preempts the establishment of covenants is moving forward. So it's prospective.
Business owners associations as well.
So it allows the residential, Lacey, Lacey owners agreements that prohibits...
It didn't go out pre-existing.
It was, it was a one, I, I would describe it as a one bite of the apple at a time. I think, you know, I've got a last... I think, you know, I've got a last slide of spoiled parts of my last slide. I would say that would be a, that would.
More, more to come on that conversation, yeah.
For clarity here, what you're saying is even if you, if you own a lot and it's in an HOA, and HOA specifically says, single family only.
Correct.
The HOA dominates that, that neighborhood still. So there's no, so we can't usurp what the HOA is and say, well, here now with the new code, you can build a fourplex. You can't do that.
And more specifically, business owners association like Lacey Corporate Center, where, you know, they specifically say you can't have residential units there, right? Even though it might match some of the land use, then how would that work, Rick?
The, the, well, in that case, it's not, as a permanent residential. But it, yes, the, the CCNRs can be even more restricted to, than city zoning regulations. And as Brian mentioned, the legislature went in and, you know, said going forward, any future CCNRs developed cannot prohibit. But they didn't go back and say, existing CCNRs have to, you know, cannot prohibit. That's, as Brian says, probably going to be another bite of the apple going forward. It's more about the Lacey historic neighborhood, just kind of give you a sense of what this would mean for that particular. That's probably the, probably the most impacted district.
It will come.
Is currently in that district, it's, single-family detached structures are on individual lots, meeting design requirements. That's, was permitted in there. So this would have to be changed to allow the two units. And then we'd have to look at the design standards of what those units would look like to maintain the design standards of the historic neighborhood.
Am I misremembering the update that we put in place for medium density residential that allowed up to a triplex on a single lot? And now this allows four. So this is a little bit of an increase if they're affordable.
Correct, correct. At one point they were looking at the four units regardless, but they rolled that back to the two and, and. But we still have to amend our low-density zones to recognize this standard.
And affordability piece is not, it's a substantial commitment.
It's not enough.
Yeah, I didn't want to say, it's not, not, it's a substantial commitment that has to be built into the title.
Oh, wow.
So it's not just like, I'm going to call it affordable.
And then five years.
Yeah, or I use a, yeah, I use a real estate development trust or something, you know, the next person, it's, no, it's got to be, I can't remember.
If ever, do you have any of those bucks somewhere?
I can't remember the total, it's not perpetuity, but it is a law.
Thirty.
It was a long time.
Housing trust dollars generally is a 40-year mark for affordability.
And there's something in statute that defines what affordable is, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Eighty percent AMI?
Yeah. What is it?
Eighty.
Eighty percent.
So, and, and the other piece, and I know we need to get moving here. The other piece is, it doesn't apply to the area within UGA. And I think that's going to be a discussion point moving forward as well. So, so like, why wouldn't we have similar development standards within the UGA? So just wanted to flag that. The last.
Doesn't it apply, doesn't it apply to the county then, only to the cities?
Correct, only within city limits.
Only within city limits.
But not within the urban, urban, urban growth area.
Well, because that's not city limits, that's county.
We have a grant that has.
Yep, Grant?
You're on mute.
We can't hear you. No, do you sunlight, can you do this?
Still on mute.
Nope, nope, nope.
Write it on a piece of paper and hold it up.
Nope, for the record, Grant is going to come to us about in the future.
Unfortunately, I think it might be how we're set up here currently in the work session because it's a little bit different than our typical work session. So it actually might be just a tech issue on our end. But, you know, one thing, you know, as we're starting these conversations and looking to the next session, as Brian indicated, and I'm getting ahead of myself, the last slide is, our things that we anticipate are going to be coming back before the legislature. And I recognize now that I put all kind of the, the good stuff up front and then we get to end on a, you know, kind of sour note. But it's also to prepare us, you know, looking again to the next session of what we're going to want to take a look at with our priorities and include in our manual so that we can get ready for those conversations and make sure that we're ready for 2024.
Can we just talk about this last one?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we're going to skip over it. So the House Bill 1474 creates a, really it's, it's a tool that's going to, that's going to theoretically provide a down payment for individuals to purchase a home for the first time. You know, we heard some really great comments today, during today's resolution on Juneteenth. And, and some of the, you know, this bill is aimed at addressing those very concerns of historical, whether it was redlining or other versions of discrimination that made it difficult for our, our local communities' color and statewide to.
So those CCNRs still exist, it's just that they're not enforceable at that level.
Yeah, and I know like in Thurston County's case, they're going through and trying to look at all the CCNRs to get them out. Does this provide funding to help jurisdictions do that or what's this?
Help people buy a house?
Yeah, it helps, it's, it's, so it's really hard because you can't, you can't legally create a program that targets a specific, specific, you know, race or ethnicity, so.
But we can look at redlining and people within the redline district could have access to.
Yep, so the bill creates a program at the Department of Commerce. It's funded through this additional hundred dollars. And, and they're, they are going, that, that, the Commerce and the group established at Commerce is going to put together a plan on how to provide financial assistance to individuals and families of communities that have historically been disadvantaged through not just redlining, but all sorts of institutional racism. You know, yeah. I, I mean, some, some of it is like, who's going to legally challenge it? Like what is legal is often defined by what is not sued.
It's one of those good ideas, it's one of those good ideas that it's all in the execution, right? It's like, I totally understand where they're coming from, but how, how do you make that legally work?
The, the bill is short on details, though it's not unintentional, but it does create a really big challenge for Commerce.
Yeah.
Was there any discussion when that, I know we've got to move on, but was there discussion of the, the efforts that cities and other jurisdictions have made using race neutral measures to sort of level the field for previously marginalized or excluded communities? Because there's, there's this option. If you try everything that is race neutral, then race conscious measures are sometimes permissible under the law. But you have to be able to demonstrate that you've done everything possible without consideration for race or gender when it's about a gender.
I'm, I'm, in, in this context, I don't believe the conversation.
Got that far.
Or, or really, yeah, I don't think, I don't think that, that, that was brought up to that extent. But there certainly is an acknowledgement that many jurisdictions are working very hard on this issue. And it was, and the, and the conversation around this bill was not necessarily in the negative context of what we're presently doing. It's just a true and honest accounting of what has happened in the past, I think. There are requirements. What piece of legislation on the comp plan to actually look at? Was, was it 1220 from last year, two years ago? So even within our, with, we're, we are tasked as a city to look into kind of our history and to address that and ensure that we are working on moving forward with the, with equality as a lens, so.
It's great because Lacey was really one, we just heard a, a history of blacks in Thurston County specifically talking about Lacey, how really why we saw a, so many blacks come to Lacey's because there was redlined districts in Olympia and Tumwater. And so they came to Lacey where we were a new area and we didn't have those redlining. And so there's been some great work recently talked about the history of Lacey and that.
And we did do, when this topic first came up about the CCNRs, we did do a research of our CCNRs and our, you know, Lacey community and did not find any that had those, those unconstitutional provisions in there. So, and that's one thing I wanted to make clear is that type of language in CCNR was found unconstitutional. I think in the late seventies, it has not been enforceable, so.
Thank you for that. Our agenda item number five was obviously aging the money that we, we got in the transportation budget last year. I think many of you are aware of, the legislature did something very unique where they passed a transportation, like projects list, but they didn't actually say, you know, when you were going to get funded. So there was 16 years, you know, the next 16 years worth of projects. And, and with the exception of last biennium, nothing was aged. So imagine, you know, the, the, the most political, like largest, you know, food fight you can. Our delegation did a great job. The governor's, the governor's budget had the funding for the I-5 corridor, you know, in out years, putting us in the danger zone. Our legislative delegation was able to pull, pull that back up and have it actually programmed. So we now know moving forward, we've got 32.5 in 2527, and then we've got the 26 in the ensuing biennium. We would have loved to have had it all in, in 2325. Whether or not we could have spent it is an interesting question.
Good question, yeah.
So that'll put a dent in it.
Yeah.
Not a big one, but.
Well, it's for the combination of the two, I, and that brings up a good question. Will this meet what we need to go through the environmental review and get to design for the next step? Because that was the big question, right? It was, oh my goodness, yeah, we got the money, but there's super restrictions and, you know, if we don't do it now, we're. But is, is this going to be enough money? Is this enough money to get us to the next, through the next phase?
I think this certainly helps us start the process. And then obviously wanting to take these funds to be able to leverage them for future federal dollars to continue the project. But yes, the idea is that this will be a good start for the preliminary design that you just described.
It's crazy that Lacey is the one that's out there, along with the, some other partners too, with the Sasaun Community. Military partnership is there, they have been great advocates for this. The Snolly Scrut tribe has, but you know, this is a state highway, you know, the Nashville highway, right? Like affects everyone, it affects, affects all of Western Washington, not just us here. We feel the impacts of it failing, but.
We will certainly continue to communicate that as well.
Yeah, Scott?
Yeah, to answer your question, this will take it through NEPA, through the environmental assessment and well into design.
Okay.
And then they can start hunting for construction funds, which it should be extremely competitive given that it feeds I-5 and, you know, with the Nisqually River meandering and approaching the North Abutment.
Yep, okay, great, thank you for that. Okay.
Do we have to continually say that this is a matter of national security when we're pressing for these topics?
We always say that, yes, and military readiness.
Yeah, it's like Spotify, we get 50 cents every time we say that.
Yeah.
It's written into the contract. So item number six was addressed law enforcement vehicle pursuits. Again, happy to report we made a fair amount of progress on this issue. Senate Bill 5352 goes back to establishing a standard of reasonable suspicion and allowing officers to engage in pursuits for reasonable suspicion of DUI and also reasonable suspicion of certain sex and violent crimes. I think the, from the law enforcement community perspective, I think they would have, like personal property and auto theft in particular would have been one that they would have liked to have seen as well, that is not covered by the, the new statute. So you would still, you would still be not able in most circumstances to pursue an individual that had stolen a vehicle, for instance.
So does it?
Unless you think they're intoxicated while they stole it, right?
So all of them are intoxicated now, yeah.
Well, so does this, does this split the, the level of proof required for different types of crimes? So you need reasonable suspicion if violent crimes under the influence, et cetera. But do you need a higher standard of proof to pursue if you suspect theft?
I'm welcome for a phone friend from the chief if you want to. It does not.
No, it creates a, 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 one standard to engage in pursuits, and that is reasonable suspicion that the people in the, in the vehicle are suspected of committing one of the qualifying crimes. It is a extremely restricted list of qualifying crimes, such as human trafficking would not qualify. Child stealing would not qualify. There are a number of laws simply, or crimes that do not qualify that everybody in this room would, would think are violent crimes. That that person needs to be apprehended immediately, they do not qualify.
It's insane.
So it's not any, well, it's a specific list of crimes.
It's a very specific and limited list of crimes. They added domestic violence, some levels of domestic violence to this as well, which is good. But again, there's also the requirement in this law about, which is reasonable about the law, the pursuit has to, the risk should not eclipse, eclipse the, the need to get this person into custody versus the danger produced by the, by the pursuit or other means to capture this individual. There's also a requirement in this that any officer that engages in a pursuit must fir, must first be certified in a pursuit intervention technique. But it's not defined what a certification is. That has not been defined by the state or by CJTC to date. So we are currently exploring that with legal counsel to what certification is, what the tech, what a pursuit intervention technique would be considered. Besides a pit maneuver, which requires the actual spinning of the vehicle, or stop sticks, or some other technique. We're not sure where that line is yet. That's still to be determined, that's being worked on. Again, sometimes laws are drafted and not all the terms of art that are used in the production of this, of legislation aren't fully defined. So that's still work in progress.
Thank you.
Another issue, again, not on our legislative agenda per se, but something I want to highlight was Senate Bill 5536, which was, pertains to Blake, which was the Supreme Court decision around like knowing possession of narcotics. There was a one-day special session that was held in the middle of May, it was May 16th, where the legislature came together and made a decision where they decided half. So the big fight had been on whether possession was going to be a misdemeanor or a gross misdemeanor. They decided that it was going to be a gross misdemeanor. But unlike a traditional sentencing grid that allows you to punish an individual under gross misdemeanor up to 364 days, for possession of narcotics, it is now 180 days. That's your statutory max under this type of gross misdemeanor. That was the compromise, I think, but, but, so a couple of things that are important from the city perspective, I think, and also obviously you'll have a, probably have to have a lot of conversations about, is from a jurisdiction perspective, whether it's, you know, whether it's, whether it was going to be a misdemeanor or a gross misdemeanor or however, it's not a felony. That means it is now under municipal jurisdiction, right? So felonies are state of Washington versus John Doe. Those are held, you know, at Superior Court, okay? Now these are going to be held in district and county court, okay?
So do we get any funding to help us with, with this?
Not enough that is going to likely defray the cost if your intention is to pursue convictions and incarcerations.
So they funded treatment alternatives?
Quite a bit of treatment alternatives. So to your point earlier in your, in your standing committee reports, there's like 36 million that's funded through the healthcare authority that is designed for grants to locals for opioid treatment and other things like that in correction setting. There's funding for additional, like, like Oxford-type houses, community hubs, building out the continuum. There was a standalone bill, but that is funded through this, that creates a new type of like crisis solution center, like a drop-off center that is designed for short-term drop-off where 23 hours or less, where you can get the individual stabilized, connected to services. But there isn't necessarily an incentive for that facility to hold them for longer.
No, so no inpatient stuff, just?
Some, yeah, so something other than just strapping someone to a gurney at like St. Pete's, frankly, right?
Is this, is there anything here for, so first conviction obviously is 180 days. Is there anything there for more time or anything, or different penalties for multiple offenders, you know, multiple violations? You know, during your third, fourth, fifth, 12th arrest? Are you able to go beyond that gross misdemeanor in the 180 days?
Sure, like the traditional drug grid, which as you go up in offender score.
Become a felony at some point?
I need to get back to you, I do not believe so.
No.
I do not believe so, no.
It does not escalate as far as the, the level of crime, it's still a gross misdemeanor. There is discussion about penalties phase being increased, the sentencing schedule. However, there is a, a definite incentive for the offender to seek counseling, because then they, then this, upon successful completion of rehabilitation or drug rehab program, then this becomes a non-criminal matter, it comes off their record, which is something that WASPIC and law enforcement has endorsed all along. The problem under the prior solution that this bill replaces is that there was no incentive for offenders to go into, into treatment. You were never arrested, you were given a referral card, and they had an option to go to treatment, but nobody took that option. Literally, the, the cards we handed out are littering Thurston County, because they would just drop them immediately and walk off. Now, going this route, we can either arrest and book, and then prosecutor, we can offer them rehabilitation options and medical treatment options. Or we can cite and release them, and as that case is then referred to prosecution, then they can go through that process as well. The idea that now there is more of an incentive for them to go and, and seek counseling and rehabilitation services. And we were in a meeting with the county, I'm sorry?
It's an improvement.
Oh, it's a vast improvement of what it was. And it does seek to create a balance between treating this as a medical issue versus a criminal one if the offender chooses to do that. I was in a meeting earlier this afternoon with the county and several law enforcement officials and prosecutor, prosecutors, municipal prosecutors and the, the county prosecutor's office, public defender's office, county clerk's office, yada, yada, yada. A lot of people were in that meeting. And we were discussing trying to get a unified approach throughout the county. We were very clear, Matt Sharp was in that meeting, or one of our city prosecutors. It was very clear that we're going to go the prosecutorial route and then give the offender the option to then seek rehabilitation, medical resources. There was some discussion about that, but it's clear that the way we have been doing it has not been effective. So we're seeking a, a better way to, to try to modify this behavior and actually give people the help they need.
Yeah, and again, you can, someone can correct the, right, within the felony sentencing structure, there is a, like the grid. And the, the, your punishment then is based on the, the current crime committed and your offender score, your criminal history. That, that does not exist within the misdemeanor punishment. The, like, one notable exception is like felony DUI, where accumulation of misdemeanors does ultimately result in like a felony, but, but that is a rare exception. I wanted to highlight this, Shannon, staff has made me aware that within your work plan for next year, annexations is all in that work plan. So in my role of providing you information, I wanted to highlight this for you for that. House Bill fourteen, twenty-five was passed, which creates an opportunity, if you choose to move forward, for state assistance in annexations. It builds on some of the work that actually Lacy spearheaded a couple of years ago on the interlocal process in order to avoid referendum clause, which was a couple of years ago, which we worked on. But this bill specifically says, hey, if the county and city can get together and agree on an area that's going to be annexed, then they can receive a credit on the state sales tax. On the slide, you can see the amounts, it vary based on the, the size of area that you may or may not annex. The legislation, you basically have five years to act on this if you choose to do so. And then within that time period, you get ten years to collect the, the state sales tax. And it's for the whole, and it's, it's the whole city, not just the portion that's being annexed. Again, it does require, it does require an interlocal agreement between the county and the city. That being said, the, the legislation specifically enumerates that the money has to be used in the area that's being annexed.
So this is going to help the city, obviously not helping the county who's losing the revenue. Does this, where does the county get a portion of this revenue too?
So the county has a seat at the table to be part of the, the conversation about what you're going to do moving forward. There is revenue involved, but the revenue explicitly has to be used in the area that's being annexed, that will be part of the city. Whether it's a trunk line that extends out or something, that's, that's subject to negotiation, but it's not just money that goes into their general fund.
In order to do this, you have to develop an annexation agreement with the county where you're going to negotiate some of those issues.
But is, is one of those, you know, you solely maintain or operate municipal services in annexation area, is one of those can be used to add additional police for that area?
I believe so.
Okay.
And one of the things you'd have to do is look at a study to estimate what that impact is, and then you have to do annual reporting that you are actually providing those services at that cost.
That's going to help a lot.
I would say it's fairly fungible.
Good.
Great, and then just the way too early looking forward. As, as Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned in your report, you know, we're still like the financial uncertainty of what's up and what's down. I think it's, it's possible that the state forecast could turn dramatically. I'm not predicting that, I'm just, I'm just saying it's within the realm of possibility. There was a couple of big revenue issues that were addressed this year, but not, not passed. One was House Bill sixteen, twenty-eight, which was an additional real estate excise tax authority that was designed for affordability. That got very close to the finish line, maybe had the votes in the House, didn't have the votes in the Senate. Hard to say exactly, since they didn't take a vote on it. And then the Senate arguably was more serious about replacing the one percent property tax cap with a cap that had a higher limit or tracked inflation. So like, instead of one percent, the proposals that we saw would have replaced it with either CPI or up to, capped at three percent. Neither of those passed. Expect they'll be back next year, especially if there are state concerns. The state's obviously a big player in property tax, and so is education, so. We still have money to fund the projects that we've allocated for this year in the transportation revenue package, but at some point in the future, that won't be true, because it's the relationship between gas tax and then diminished use of gas tax and the increase in EVs or other, or other just fuel-efficient fleet standards. So road usage charge is going to come back, it was brought up this year. It will continue to be more important conversation. Affordability, there was a lot of, you know, missing middle, there was other stuff on trans, transitorian development. There's a lot of conversation on, on the supply side of housing, but not necessarily a ton of work on, on the affordable side, so I think we'll see more on that. I alluded, transitorian development did not pass this year. Eleven eighty-one, which was on kind of climate change and building climate into your planning process, passed, had some references to environmental justice and social justice, but bigger bills on GMA equity are still out there, were introduced, were not passed. Maybe lastly, just for the sake of time, the Defense Communities Compatibility Act, which is grant funding, which our partner, Salsan Military Partnership, was basically created out of wholehearted in twenty nineteen, I believe. This year, Shannon was pointed out, in his excellency, that instead of just like, traditionally that was more focused on land use and, and land use alignment between neighboring communities and the base. We've funded childcare centers. And as we think about moving forward, what are the opportunities for us and this community and some of the work on the target, whether or not this would be a viable option, I think deserves serious scrutiny. So I wanted to, I wanted to highlight, and again, I'm not taking credit for that, your excellent staff, right, was the one who noticed that and said, hey, Brian, this is kind of funny. So, or this is interesting, I think it's probably a better discussion. So, and then the last bullet is law enforcement liability. You know, within, within the state of Washington, generally speaking, law enforcement have qualified immunity from civil liability if they're, you know, in the course of their job. There was bills introduced that would impact that. Honestly, at the end of the day, the last version alive would have, the only person who would have been held fiscally or possible was the city, if, if an officer. So I think that bill's going to come back and, and whether the kind of onus of civil liability is on the individual or the jurisdiction hires the individual, I think is TBD. But that bill was introduced this year, I suspect it'll come back next year as well. And that concludes my planned remarks.
Can I confirm there was a partial veto on that, that we talked about at the beginning? The airport sighting, so...
Yeah, I know, I knew there was a partial veto.
Different section of the veto.
So I'll report back.
Okay.
Impacted as veto.
We'll certainly get a message out on several questions that were asked, and we'll follow up on that. But I do just want to again point out that we did have a very successful session. You know, obviously our capital budget request, it's just outstanding, especially when we're looking at Greg Kuyyo Park development. And, you know, the, the regional athletic complex is also something that is going to be super important, and we'll continue to look at, you know, the emergency operations center moving forward. So thanks again, Brian, for all the efforts. With the last slide, again, you know, as we get back to the fall, although, you know, this is kind of an annual process, but as we start to really kind of focus in in the fall of what our priorities are, and then what we also want to take a look at for what could come up in this session, we'll be having additional conversations with the council on what will be included within our priorities and our legislative manual moving forward.
Any, any other questions? Well, thank you as always.
Yeah, thank you.
Obviously, Shannon, thank you for representing the city so well and, and helping out. Thank you, Brian, as always.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a privilege, and I really appreciate it. You're firstly an inspired group of leaders, and you have incredible staff that really helped me represent you in the highest regard.
Great.
We still are from Lakewood.
I know. Their loss.
Now we've reached the, the part of our, our agenda where we're going to, the council will now meet an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment under RCW forty-two dash thirty dash one-ten. I think we will be an executive session, let me have another break here before we go into executive session. And I, I think we'll be in executive session for...
Ten minutes?
No, I think it's going to be longer than that.
Twenty.
Do I hear twenty-five?
If it's fifteen, we're all going to leave, or it's just be you?
No, I, I think we'll be, so we're, we'll, we'll go into executive session. Let's give us like, we'll, at eight fifteen, it gives us a little, you know, break here.
Go in at eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, and we'll, I'm going to say for a half an hour, because I think we have enough conversation for a half an hour. So we'll be in executive session until eight forty-five. During this work session, and we'll go into executive session at eight fifteen.
Side note, George Sharp watches TCT.
We're made, and so we have reached that in our agenda. Objection. I'll call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacy.